Everyone, I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session Thursday, May 25th, 2023. Time is 3:03 PM. I will do a full call, Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Starzette?
Here.
Um, on the end, I would like to make more. Not much. So, we can answer. There will be a solid event, I believe. Yes. Um. Origin, um, we have a. Uh, we received word in this body that the general public, it's been confirmed that there are state doctors. And that's what I speak to them. They put issue in the. Maybe it's two or six. And it's. And for the. The problem. Is it? Therefore. Very. In the poll, I think you're. On our. So, on first to stretch again is the presentation from Second Row, Ms. Lindsay. Welcome, thanks for being here. Um, this is a cultural access program. And I'm trying to listen to you. That's great, thank you all for giving us this time. Um, communication of the world as a whole, obviously. By. Public school programming, so really excited to be on this. Cultural access is different than creative. Because I know that there's other creative districts with programs, and this is entirely. And it actually works with the school programming and. And by. So. So, the main point is cultural access is all about access. For students and everybody in the community to have access to going out into the field, going to museums, going to experience a learning. And that is how this program. It's the best. Base. It originated with House Bill 1575. A lot of people will know it, and it was a revitalization program. But what happened in 2017 is the county had not initiated it at the time. It's thousands of. And. This. Moving on the balance. So, this is sales tax first. Content one percent to. And. Yeah. And it has also a very specific. That is about local. Cultural organizations by school and. It's really important. And it gives, I don't know, it's two cultural organizations, it's also going to. Two students, two seniors, two people who may not have the little access to this type of program. And the community will benefit because you're getting invited and that programming, cultural programming is really an economic thing. So, we can be there. Particularly where we also. Just. And for. Nonprofits in the area of. Museum, Wildwatch, Bookshop, and so we thought of this law, and so it's a part of all of these types of liberalizations. Plus. And then. I just. So, we will reveal. We're gonna see this leverage going out to the state. Just. This is really long, and I want you to read it if you haven't read it already. The main point is that. It is. Really identifying. They put in a slide here about the difference between cultural access program and creative. There are, but wait now, I only know one city, as both. As, uh. Access program. Been in. You are. Two accesses. So, I think it's important. So, another point that just happened was the passage of. Then.
You're us.
Oh, okay.
There's a, well, I've heard from two people that are on, in the attendees, so I think we should.
Is, is Councilmember Starzette still on?
Yes.
I am, it is, it is breaking up quite a bit, but um, I thought it was just me.
Maybe he can talk.
It might.
Oh.
Okay.
Now it's ready. Uh, maybe. Councilmember Starzette, can you hear us better now?
It is better now, yes. I can't hear whoever's talking now, though.
Okay.
It seems like it's just picking up certain voices better than others.
Okay, we'll keep working on it.
Okay. Yes, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna speak louder, can you hear me now?
So, House Bill 1575, that was passed just recently in the last session, and what that did was it will grant council manic authority for this particular levy, so you as a city council have the right to vote this into place with or without a vote of the people. Prior to this date, a vote of the people was required, we had to put it on the ballot and put it out to the general public to vote on it. So, now you do have the power to pass it in for a seven-year levy, so that is something that I'm here to advocate for and to help you understand a little bit better what that would look like if that was to happen. So, as we, the, the point is that if it is enacted, funds will be collected in 2014 and available for distribution in 2025, excuse me. Yeah. Um, so this is just a little more detail on House Bill 1575, and it really changed the way that this levy can be enacted. Lobby, lobbying efforts were underway for quite a bit by Inspire Washington, that's an advocacy group that also advocates for cultural access programs throughout the state, so that is kind of the, the rundown on 1575. The point here is that there is a big public benefit for this. We would have more robust programming because we can have more staffing, have, you know, a better quality of programming available to both the general public, to school programs, and it provides baseline funding for cultural organizations. If you're not familiar with how cultural organizations are actually funded, nonprofits basically have three month funding models. One is community funding, which is generous donations by anybody that loves them, right? The next is a huge endowment, somebody leaves a huge endowment, so you use that endowment in order to earn the interest and use that for operations. The third way is as a municipal entity, so there's municipal support either through a taxing stream, a funding stream, or through general funds of a city, county, or state. So, those are basically the three ways, and it's really important to remember that most, all of our nonprofits in town don't have baseline funding. They don't have that dedicated baseline of support. So, we go out and we ask people for donations and support and do fundraising events and do all this stuff, but if we had the general baseline funding through a program like this, we would have our staff paid, we'd have our basic uh, just operations paid for, and then we can really do a robust program, which we have to hold back on right now because we just don't have the resources to do that. So, it's a very low cost to the community, very high return on investment. And last of all with this slide, it, it's important that the bill says and that the people remember that this fund is not a replacement for other types of existing funding sources. And what that means is, for example, probably the most obvious one would be, a lot of these organizations could still go to apply for lodging tax funds or a grant from the Arts Commission. You can't say because you're getting this one, you can't get that one, and that's actually very difficult, so. So, what does it take to pass? I mean, this is actually a slide about if we put this to the voters of the city of Gig Harbor, and these stats are based on whatever I could pull from the last, probably 2001. And so, you know, ultimately, this was majority vote passed. That requirement is waived now for city councils that wanna pass this levy as of July 23rd of 2023. So, that is the effective date of House Bill 1575.
Just a quick clarification, you said 2001, you mean 2021?
Oh, sorry, 2021, yes, thank you, all those numbers, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's indicated, yeah, so we can go to the next slide. Uh, the fund allocation, this is the model that Olympia uses, and this is actually pretty well defined in the, in the law itself. So, this is the Olympia model, 10% goes to program management, 10% goes to school access, 80% goes to, is distributed amongst cultural organizations. And, and that is pretty well stipulated in the bill, although you have a little bit of flexibility on those percentages, depending on what the program management costs would actually be. So, the other thing about this is that if funds are allocated to get this program started, those startup funds can be recouped, recouped from the funding that comes in through the sales tax that is collected. This is just a kind of a, a mini breakdown of how this works, so there's startup costs, there's program costs, and there's a certain percentage allocation, and really what we wanted to do was test out you know, what kind of distribution would this look like, and I know it just looks like a bunch of numbers on the page, but I think if we look at it in the way that we estimate that this would generate just over a million dollars per year at the, the basic rate, and there would be some startup costs, there would be program administration, and of course, it'd be distribution to nonprofit programs. And there is ample money to, to actually get that baseline funding going for a number of organizations in the area.
Almost. But get these numbers right.
Yeah.
Um, the 1.02 million, um, as Dave chimes in to that, that's what you think you'd be getting from your 0.1% on top of, so we must be getting.
Sorry.
0.1%.
It's 0.00.
No, it isn't, that's, that's wrong. 0.00.
Point of order, we don't need to argue, especially. Yeah.
Would we be, would they be getting that million dollars, I, I guess I, what's our sales tax revenue in the city?
That's pretty solid because the TBD is 0.2%.
Okay.
So, we would be getting half of what the TBD is, and we're 2 million, some odd hundred thousand dollars, so that's a very nice conservative number.
That's good.
So. Just, just to clarify, because on the sales tax base, it said add 0.001%. Which is not 1%.
That's not 0.1%.
Sorry. No, that's, I'm confused too.
It is.
So, well, I don't think, well.
As, as I understand it, I don't know for sure without pulling the RCW in front of me, it's, a lot of times they go 0.1%, but then we have to do our math and move it over, and it's 0.001.
Right, it's 0.001.
Yeah.
Not 0.001.
Because. The way I stay sane with this thing is, we're, what are we, 8.7 right now?
8.8.
8.8? We'd go to 8.9, right, so just, you just run it into that.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's an easier way to do it.
Yeah.
Thank you, I apologize for the clarification because I'm trying to look at how much it would cost the individual average person, so apologies.
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah. 8.8. Yes, that's the way to think. Thank you. Good clarification, that's why we're here, right?
Something to think about is that we're taxing everybody that shops in Gig Harbor, not every citizen, so we'll be this is good because everybody comes to shop here, it's gonna be paying, paying a share for our benefit. And we're a regional shopping area.
We have a few more minutes for your.
Yes, okay. Let's keep going. Uh, let's just give you a sampling, I just pulled a sampling of, uh, from 990 reports from that 2019, what the numbers might look like for different organizations. And you'll see a big discrepancy there between the museum and, and say, Argo Wildwatch and Gig Harbor Bookshop. The reason for that is that our budget is a lot bigger because we own and operate our own facility. So, other organizations that don't have those costs don't have as high a bottom line, so that's the major difference. But the, the truth is, for each one of these organizations, this is a significant amount of resources that can really make a huge difference for what they are able to offer to the community. Let's keep going here. So, people have asked about what qualifying organizations, what makes a nonprofit qualified organization to receive funds? I think this is an important question. They have to be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, they have to be located in and providing the majority of services in Gig Harbor, in the Peninsular School District, in South Puget Sound. So, um, a lot of these guidelines and very specific rules and regulations would be actually identified and hashed through with a community advisory panel that is mandated by the law to have representatives from different organizations, from the city, from the school district, be involved in that so that we can shape this to really work for the community. Um, organizations have to have a proven track record of providing public and school programs, it's really important that we make sure that that is happening. And then, they also have to provide programming and experience available to the general public. They also have to have at least one paid employee with professional experience and education in the field, because that's how we ensure the quality of the programming, that's one of the ways. Yeah, this is a, a big heavy duty one, I think that we will just keep going here. So, I think this is an important piece here where, like many of our other community committees, the advisory council is something that has to be devised, and we have a preliminary council put together, a committee that would help develop the guidelines for this, using the RCW, using the model set forth by Tacoma and Olympia so that we, we can learn from others who have already initiated this program in much larger cities than ours. So, it's good to, to build on those experiences and help, help us shape the program so it best works for us. Um, so this is a little diagram of what we would need to do to pass this, so basically, we're looking at support of the program. And if we pass it this year, we can collect funds in 2024. And then, during that time, we also adopt the program guidelines, establish how the grant guidelines would be established, and the organizational benefits and qualifications. And then in 2025, for the next seven years, we have the resources to be able to disperse those funds to cultural organizations. So. This is a slide for the school district because the school district is an important partner in this, and I have met with the superintendent, uh, the assistant superintendent to discuss this program, and they are, you know, supportive of it and, and excited about seeing that happen, so they would prevent, they would provide a representative to the advisory council so that we will make sure that the programming that's designed and offered through this is a real benefit to the school district as well. What do organizations do? We basically need the organizations to step up and provide a letter of support and to help us understand what their needs are and who they serve and how they do it. Um, it's a, a time where we can, what we do is some community educational sessions so that people can learn more about it. And, and then, I have invited people to attend the study session today. But it's really important just to think about what, what all we need to do and how we do it, so that when the time comes to disperse funds, we have a viable program that's well defined. The, this is another one about the advisory committee, it's really talking about what they do and how we establish the guidelines, how we network with other organizations, understand and meet with the city staff to make sure that what we're creating here is a workable option for the community. So, these are some references, I did kind of blast through this as quickly as possible so we can get to some questions. If you wanna read the RCWs that are all listed here, there's also web addresses for Tacoma Creates as well as the Olympia Cultural Access Program and House Bill 1575 that just passed, so all those references are there.
Okay, there you go. Um, Joe, I can hear my.
So, in the bill, it says the county did not impose the sales and use tax under this section prior to December 31st, 2024, a city within the county can do that. Right, have we had conversations with the county to ask if they're going to do this countywide or not?
Yeah, so I, when I first kind of started advocating for this, one of the first conversations was with Inspire Washington and lobbyists that were putting forward this bill. They said that since Pierce County already has a program, they waived their option to initiate a countywide. Now, I, I wanted to go a step farther than that and actually get documentation from the county council that that was in fact the case, because they may decide to do it for unincorporated Pierce County. But because Tacoma Creates was passed in Pierce County, and their resolution actually says that the county has waived their option to exercise it, then that should be opening the door for municipalities like the Harbor to be able to initiate this program.
The county council's office called me yesterday asking questions, they don't yet have that documentation, so we're gonna be in touch over the next couple of weeks to see what's going on there.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes, thank you. So, after this program is going for seven years, how does it get continued on for year eight?
Uh, my understanding, based on House Bill 1575, is either the council can re-initiate it, or you can opt to put it to the voters and re-initiate it. So, it does have to be re-initiated at, at the seven-year mark.
Either by one of those two minutes.
It would take council action either way. So, it would come, the council at that time would either need to initiate somewhere to what Stephanie's asking today.
Right.
Or put it on the ballot.
Yeah, I was just checking to see what the, if the advisory had, committee had that capability, but it does not, no, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Bummer, do we know from one of the other cities that has done this, what the staff time commitment is for this?
Yes. Well, and that's what's nice about this program is that it's written into the bill that it's paid for. So, that, that 10%, when I'll say I've had conversations, quite a few with Olympia, because they're just initiating, it's very fresh. And Mary Grace Gallow, who runs that program for the city of Olympia, said that we might need to have more than 10% allocated for a staff person because the margin isn't small. They have 10% because they, their collection rate is, is higher, it's not, the rate isn't higher, the amount is larger. So, it might wind up that we have to have 15% that goes to program management, for example, but those funds come directly from the funds that are collected. So, it's a, it's, and again, it's, right now Olympia has one full-time person, Tacoma Creates has, I believe, two full-time people just running a program, but they're also distributing to over 50 organizations throughout the city, so we wouldn't have that many, and it would probably be one person.
So, but the program fully funds that one person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Mike, any special questions? Yeah, oh, I did, I was just trying to think cost-benefit analysis, and so I was trying to figure out, so if the, the average person, let's say, spent a thousand dollars a month at Costco and Target and groceries, and, and that, you know, there's, I'm sure there's, so that would cost additional dollar. Right. Dave is here, Jen.
Not to differ, but groceries generally aren't taxable. They don't be lost sales tax.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, 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 so let's, okay, so then it would be 50 cents, you know, 500 dollars on taxable items.
But is that the correct amount if you spend $500 on taxable items?
If, our tax rate's 8.8%, spend a thousand dollars on taxable items, it's $8, it's $88, so it'd be $89. So, it'd be a.
A dollar.
A dollar. Makes sense, it's a.
So, it's my. I just wanted, because it seemed like a really low impact, I wanted to make sure.
It is.
And again, since we don't pay taxes on food, it doesn't hurt people that are.
Yep, that's what I just wanted to, thank you.
Yes, so we have a, we have a transportation district, and that went out to the voters, and the first time it went out to the voters, it did not pass, but the second time it did. And so, I think our, I think our voters are really interested in, in doing something and being involved in this, and now we know from the flash vote, that, and, and from our cop plan with the folks who all came in and put notes by arts, the arts board, how much they care about nonprofits and arts in this community, I think they would be happy to vote for it. And I, I'd like to see us really, if we decide to do this, really promote it and put forth and encourage, I think our community would definitely vote for it, so it's a good thing.
So, I understand they don't have to vote on it now.
Councilmember Wood, so were you suggesting that you, you would rather have it go on the ballot versus council?
I, I think our citizens should be able to vote for this, yes, I'd like this to go on the ballot.
Councilmember Mike? Yeah, um, what is, is there an administrative cost to putting a, something on the ballot?
There is. And so, what I would recommend is you've been taking in a lot of information right now, and I think there's a number of questions that you may have, and if you can funnel those to me. I know that we wanted to kind of see if council had a general, let's find out more information before we dug into what our, because we would need to be a part of this and have a staff member that is overseeing this, which we need time to evaluate what all that would entail. Um, so. What we would recommend is if there's questions, we would like to look at them and then come back and present the answers to you. You.
I've been living and breathing in this for over a year, so I'm happy to do research, I, I will add that we did do a, a survey on this topic with first our members and then out to social media. With first our members and then out to social media of the people that are following the museum. And it was interesting because everybody that was involved directly, had a direct connection to the museum. It was an eighty percent to twenty percent support this. And that was when it was potentially property ducks. And then when we said, would you support this if it was sales tax, it was exponentially more. And then the social media one was more fifty fifty, it was kind of in just a different, different dynamic or a different demographic. So, but we could do that again with more specifics and get a little more information. And the city could put that out in their survey software as well. And who knows, I mean, it's a way of getting immediate feedback, as long as people understand what it is.
And what I'd like to do, building on what Stephanie said, is get your questions, council, then I can provide you back. An executive memo answering those questions, what the administrative cost would be to put it on the ballot, what it would cost. For somebody to, for us to house that as a staffer. And then based on your discussion at that meeting, we can determine. If you're going to put that on the ballot, if you decided as a council or if you're not interested.
Okay.
Thank you again for being here. Really appreciate your presentation. And I wanted to add that I think you probably received a letter from Lindsay, who's still in town now. And she would be here, but she was doing programs. Yes, it's beautiful day. Yeah, it's a great presentation. Thank you so much. Yeah. Good to be here. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to our item, second item, our twenty twenty four through twenty twenty nine six year transportation improvement program. And this presentation is from our county engineer, Aaron Holt. Thanks for being here, Aaron.
Thank you, Margaret. Good afternoon, council. Tiffany shared what is the one page that I put there in her personal degree. So yeah, a lot here to look at tonight, but yeah, just going to kind of go over the proposed twenty twenty four to twenty twenty nine tip. And I'd like to start with this memo here that I put together. So what is the six year tip? It's the city's list of transportation projects that have to happen over the next six years. It's also a planning document that engineering and public works updates yearly in June. And is adopted via resolution by city council. It's a requirement of the RCW for the revised code of Washington. It is also a useful tool for us for the public works department who are applying for state or federal grants. It's a document in the form of a map and a report. The report you won't see in your packet tonight, but that will be done prior to the June twenty six council meeting. If you would like to see that in advance without me, I can kind of send it out once we make some progress on it. But yeah, the the map I have done is included in the council package and we will be looking at that a little bit later. For RCW thirty five seventy seven ten, a new project can only be added to the tip if that project's identified in our comprehensive plan. And worth noting is that with the planning department, we're getting a new update of that comp plan. So there's an opportunity to be developing a new near term list of projects and also new long range list of projects with that. So I also have listed here some examples of a project that are high on the list. For example, for one through three and some of the characteristics. So project this one through through three is typically budgeted by city council already. That, and sometimes that project has received state or federal grants, which have been what isn't, that one is associated with them. The project is anticipated to begin prior to other tip projects that are lower down the list. And or that project has been shown in our traffic modeling to have a large benefit to vehicular pedestrian level service. So next is just some examples of projects that are low on the list. Those projects typically wouldn't be budgeted yet by city council, haven't received federal or state grants. And anticipated to happen kind of late in the tip six year type rate. So in this case, a good project might not be starting design until twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. And then a couple of examples here of what the tip is not, is a complete list of projects that are set in stone. Nor a commitment by the city to spend money on any particular transportation project. Or a commit, and then just a side note here, commitments to when transportation projects are typically decided during the budget process.
And it's not a priority list either.
Correct.
I go up there well because every year we do this, someone always has this question, well, that top priority, we think. But it's important. Anybody that reads that, let them know it's not a priority.
Correct. Yep, it is not a priority list. So yeah, Tiffany, if we could move on to the next kind of one pager here. The I put together this kind of high level list of the progression of a transportation project. So these are all points where city council has input on the project. So as I mentioned earlier, with the comp plan update, we're updating our transportation element or the TE. We're required to do that every ten years. And we take a really comprehensive look at our, our transportation network as a whole. We have their modeling, both current year, six year and long range year, which in this case, I think it's going to be twenty forty four. So moving across here to the, that brings us to the tip. So it's the near term planning document that identifies a list of planned transportation projects over the next six years. As I mentioned previously, they're required to be consistent with the comp plan. Another opportunity for council input is the city budget process, which we're all familiar with. And also council award of design or construction projects for contracts for a project. So yeah, that brings us to this year's tip, so if we could look at the twenty three, twenty four comparison list. Thank you. There were really not a lot of changes here. We've been needing to add, in red there, we've been needing to add Prentice Avenue of the Benamore Street project to the tip list. So that's been done, that's consistent with our comp plan. So that's a new project number ten. And then the other minor changes are projects number eight and nine. Project number eight, Peacock Hill Avenue, past street improvements that moved from fifteen to eight. Budgeted now, so we slid that one up a bit. And then the Cushman Trail, Phase Five design, we have some budget to begin of what we're going with. Phase five A, the stability study is going to go from Oregon to the hospital. So that's also budgeted, so we slid that one up quite a bit actually as well. So those are really the three major changes to this year's tip. And then, yeah, we could kind of look at the map next maybe. Thank you to Mike Simmons for putting this together. We've been using kind of archaic ten year old tip map and years prior in this one. He put together for us and it's going to be a lot more, more useful for us moving forward. But yeah, this is just a graphical depiction of where the projects are at. If it's a roadway segment, it's identified as a, as a line on the map. And if it's an intersection project, it's identified as a dot or a circle. But yeah, that's a, you know, a little bit fast as well of information, but that's all I had prepared for tonight. And you have to answer your questions.
Great.
Yeah, so you talk, this are not in priority, and yet you talk about different projects moving up the list. So what does that mean?
Yeah, so when we kind of looked at that memo, what is the tip? So usually if a project becomes budgeted, for example, it can move up from like, for example, the Cushman Trail Base Five. I think it was project number twenty seven last year. And since now some of that is budgeted, we typically slide it up. So it's not an exact priority list, but kind of that memo, what is the tip? Kind of outlines how we like to order things. So if something's budgeted, it can move up some of that.
So I I'm, I'm looking especially at Prentice. I know we've had a problem because we didn't get any federal funding for that.
Yeah, and we are, Jeff and Katrina and I have met on a couple of different occasions. And we're looking at sliding around some funds. I also met with our state TIB Transportation Improvement Board representative. It recently, yesterday, he came out and visited a few of our grants or for aid and for projects. I think we're, I think we're going to be okay with that one, even though we didn't get the federal grant. We're going to be able to supply some things around.
So we're not going to have to choose between, say, that or thirty eight? No, so the, what the work that Jeff and Aaron have done is great. And so the kind of the direction, let's figure out, let's figure out how to make it work without burdening the general. And so they've done great work, Aaron, as you just mentioned, has identified projects that would rank high in the state process for TIB funds. And so we're hopeful, even though we did not receive federal funds, that it would need the state funds. Which again, are less requirements for us to need with the money anyway. So it may be that the project is moved back a little since we don't have the funds on the ready. But we don't believe that there'll be a general fund impact if we're able to receive these state grants.
So does it, does it matter when we go for grants, where projects appear on this list or they don't look at that?
No, it doesn't matter. It's, for me, it feels good to be able to say, hey, we have this as tip project number three. But there's no points assigned to it. If it's free, it gets ten points. If it's twenty eight, it gets less. So there is no points assigned to it where it's, what's important is that it's.
Okay, and and being shovel ready or design ready doesn't give us any additional points?
But that does certainly, yeah. So I just met with TIB and they're actually really prioritizing awarding projects that are ninety five, hundred percent within ownership of it.
Which is great for our projects that we have nearing that.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you so much.
Councilor Henderson?
So on this list, or tip list. Do you bounce that off our twenty eighteen did on the go transportation plan at all to see whether those fit into them?
Yeah, definitely. That's what, that's what originally and ultimately the comp plan and the TV is what drives a lot of this tip list. And council, council priorities too, but it has to be a project from, it has to be bold from the TV list. To even be eligible to be on the tip list.
Okay. Another question too, on the level of services. I mean, under this, what's the six year transportation improvement program? Say pedestrian level of service, have we calculated an LOS for pedestrians anywhere in the city?
We have a, what would you call it? So we have a level of service for pedestrians and bicycles that we did in our twenty eighteen. TE and active transportation plan or ATV. It's a, it's an interesting way of doing it. For example, for pedestrians, what we did is if there was no sidewalks or pedestrian facilities on either side of the road. It's a bailing level service. If there was sidewalks on one side of the road, it's a C level of service. And if there was sidewalks on both sides of the road, it would be A. So it's, it it worked for us at the time. We're going to be taking a fresh look at that again. There's obviously much more complex ways of analyzing that.
Yeah, I was going to ask if you're using a multimodal level of service analysis as put out there. I think it's a national cooperative highway research program. Takes into account pedestrian, public transportation, vehicle transportation, bikes, lots of stuff.
They would, the, the staff looked at that in twenty eighteen. And it was the, at the time, we were directed to not utilize that. And so I think what Aaron is, what Aaron is saying is. We tipped our toe into active transportation there. And I think that what we have right now is good because it allows us to, for instance, along Burnham and Thirty Eighth Avenue, identify those areas in red that do not have any sidewalks. So I think that it has served us, so I don't want to say what was done was a waste. Because I think it's helped us prioritize the areas that are failing. But there's an opportunity for additional enough.
Yeah, if you're moving forward, you can start tipping our toe into multimodal.
Yeah, with this new update, we have the opportunity to look at pedestrian and bicycle level service differently than we have.
Right, thanks.
Councilor Martin? Question for you in the modeling, do we take into account, we just recently, what, about a month, month and a half ago. Saw some really bad traffic issues on sixteen and sort of came to us for roundabouts and stuff. Does that get backward into the modeling, you know, level of service, knowing that there's so many times within a year that something like that could impact the local traffic flow?
Oh, so like a really localized incident, like an accident or something?
Yeah, or knowing that we're regional, right? So it's not just Gate Harbor, people traveling from Gate Harbor, but it's often people having to use Gate Harbor to get through. A road that's no longer possible for whatever the reason.
Yes, so those are very different questions. So I'll just, I'll address the regional first. So yes, our model takes into account all of the vehicles coming into Gate Harbor, leaving Pierce County. Entering New Harbor and then going back to Pierce County. So it breaks that down into different zones, depending on which arterial road we're talking about. But the model definitely is for, for those kinds of trips. As far as kind of incidents, such as an accident on sixteen, we don't really account for those. And the reason for that is because we wouldn't want to, for example, design your whole system on something that doesn't happen daily. So what we choose to do, or have chosen to do as a city is about the PM peak hour of traffic. So the peak hour between four and six PM is what we found to be our, our average worst traffic throughout the day. So that's what we've chosen to adopt our level of service during that time of day. Everything kind of triples down from there and our impact fees and all through that and everything like that, so.
Impact fees would be very high if we planned for. It was a good question.
Yeah.
Isn't that funny? We talked about that one pretty much, didn't we? Yeah, so that would help us build a, a roadway side, a frontage road between Rosedale and. Behind the freeway on the side of the freeway, yeah.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. Just because you asked a question about the, the recent accident on sixteen that stopped everything. And that was after our discussion with the chief regarding emergency preparedness. So he has been talking with Southside nine one one, they have, I can't remember what it's called, and he's not here. But what allows emergency providers to issue an amber alert or silver alert, for instance? They have the technology to geolocate who's in, like, like, say, Gate Harbor at the time of a, an accident like this and send out a message. And so we're looking at, we're looking at being able to implement that for instances like, you know, every road's blocked. So, you know, go have a restaurant. And also that, that can work for an urban wildfire or something like that, so.
Big brother can be.
It can be. So Chief Don and Chief BC are collaborating on, on that. So we'll hope to have that, something like that within a year probably.
All right, thank you.
So this will be brought on to their next council meeting production?
June twenty sixth.
All right. And moving on to our third item, the unlimited voted bond discussion. Finance Director Dave Rodenbach will lead this report. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. I think Katrina had something to say before we start this. Am I right? I mean.
Oh, I will.
Unless you want me to stumble through what we talked about the other day.
Oh, sure. Yes, so we will adjourn until three fifteen seven.
Thank you.
Welcome back to the Gate Harbor City Council Study Session on Thursday, May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. We returned from break. The time is three fifty nine PM and we're moving on to item three. Our unlimited voted bond discussion, and this. Our unlimited voted bond discussion, and this will be our finance director, Dave Ruddenbach.
Well, thank you, I, I think that when we first introduced this back in December, we were talking about it. January times have flipped twenty. Literally, and, and, and really over the last two months. So this may not be a viable thing to put out to the voters right now. And because remember, this would require a sixty percent. Of the last election approval, yes vote, and, and that's really a high standard in good times. And, and so we're not necessarily presenting this with the thing of let's get it on the ballot and whatnot. But this is, is meant to give you a, a feel. And set the table for a later date when it's, it's good to do this, and also to show you, um, and the voters what, what. The cost of these projects are and, 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 and the cost of funding them, because they're gonna have to be borrowed at this point to, to, to pay one. And so within this, we, we did these scenarios, and I won't go over them, I'll let, let you just ask questions on them, and then we also came up with a. An à la carte rate, if you will, and I think it was, I'm not sure, is, do we not, I don't think we put it in here, but I think it was point oh one. Six per thousand. And so we could scale it, and we can always use that. We can't always use it in the future, that number's gonna change based on the environment, but that, that number's really based on a lot of estimates. That our financial advisor used, you know, stretching out, uh. They go twenty years of growth and, and property tax values based on. On the past, and we're, we're relying on. Uh, estimates of what inflation's gonna be and, and economic factors that we just have no control over, so. The further out you go, the sketchier it is, ju- just notice that the trend is with rates, you're gonna go out higher. With the initial levy, and it's gonna go down because our property tax values are going up. And, and that's pretty much the, the best way to do it, and, and just know you don't have to go twenty year bonds, you can go ten, you can go fifteen, twenty, you can go thirty. It, it's just the average of the bond that gets approved is, is right around twenty years.
If the rates change a little bit, don't they, how long you go out?
Yes, they do, yes. For sure, and, and they, they do those rates, just like you see the, the treasury yield curve, if you will, and the, generally, the way it works. In economics, the further out you go, the higher the rates, but right now it's inverted, and they, and they actually go lower, but if. The further out you go, the sketchier it is, and then when they sell the bonds, they sell them in, in tranches, if you will. So a twenty million dollar bond will have over twenty years, let's say, a million each year, but then when they market these bonds. It may be five hundred the first, five hundred the second, and then the third year is a one and a half, because that's how the bond purchasers want it, and, and they want a bond out here. And, and that's all the magic that Dave Tragisir, you've seen presented to us, when he, when he gets them sold. But these are the projects we came up with and the relative costs. For U T G O for various amounts over twenty years, and then just the average end of the service. And the one of note is the L T G O. I, cause I think we're gonna push towards or look at doing an L T G O, I don't know, twenty three, twenty four. And, and I don't know exactly for what, but, uh, the difference between U T G O and L T G O. The L T G O, uh, best way to put it is council has so many resources to work with. The L T G O comes out of your current resources. Now, okay, so it comes out of the general bond budget, so when we do the next budget, if we were to do this particular bond right here. We'd have to bond, budget a hundred sixty one thousand for debt service for the next year. The U T G O goes outside of that, and we get our own budget for ourselves. And council or council taxpayers give us the money for that debt service through an additional collection. And, and that's the ultimate difference, and two, there's a slight better rate on, on a U T G O, because taxpayers are promising to do whatever it takes to pay that bond. With the L T G O, the city's promising to do whatever it takes within its current resources to pay that bond.
Thank you, Dave, so much for all of this work, to kind of tie the bow here for. You know, I know you all know this, but for the reporting and anyone that's listening. The recently adopted pros plan has a capital outlay of forty four million dollars. It's a very large for a city our size. And so with that, we've been looking at ways to fund what the residents have told us that they want. Under our existing financial resources that are available to us. When we started looking at this, Dave and I and the mayor about eight months ago, as he alluded, as Dave alluded to, the financial situation in our country. And locally was much different. And so as we've been charging forward to bring you forward, uh, all the information on what this would be. You know, we've been looking at what's been going on, um, financially in the country, locally with our residents. And, and keeping the tab on that, with, with whatever we decide today, we still have forty four million dollar outlay. And we're still going to have an issue funding that, and I, that is just the reality of having that plan. Um, we know about what our budget is every two years, and we know, um, how many, and how much improve, how many. How big the improvements are needed, um, to meet this plan. And so there will be some tough discussions that we'll have to have about how are we gonna fund, what is gonna be prioritized, where is it going to come from? In particular, if our, um, revenues are going to decrease, um, as we've seen that they are through, um, reach and sales taxed, et cetera. So that's something to keep in mind. With that being said, at the last council meeting, council had talked about not necessarily supporting the bond, but saying, hey, let's go see what this would cost. And so what Dave has done in here is, you know, he's done an U T G O bond for three million, five million, and eight million. And that was kind of to give council a, um, eight hundred thousand dollar home, what it would cost annually for a household. Um, to pay on their property taxes, and so you can see here for a three million dollar, um. Uh, U T G O bond for eight hundred thousand dollar home, it'd be about, uh, forty one dollars, for five million, it'd be about sixty seven dollars. And for eight million, it would be a hundred and six dollars extra in property tax per year on an eight hundred thousand dollar house. Um, so these are the, this is a, a good education, I think, I, no matter what is decided, I don't think this was a waste of time. I think that we owe it to our residents to be looking at these things and determining, um, what is good in order to get them what they've told us that they desire. And is in the approved plan. However, as Dave mentioned, you know, we are, we're seeing. The writing on the wall in terms of, you know, economically with some of our revenues, we've also been hearing from our residents that. In particular, those on fixed incomes, that right now is pretty tight with inflation, uh, the way that it is, and with. Um, their, the recent property tax increases for the school district, uh, or the fire department, one of the two has now hit. Has now hit the, the property tax rolls, and so, um, an additional point of information is when Fish Feed Bank talked to them. The last two months have been their highest months of need ever, and the primary, um, people coming in are seniors on fixed incomes. And so we've been talking about this administratively, that perhaps now is not the correct time to go out. For the bond for those reasons, another reason to hang on that may be a good reason to not report with this at this time. Is one of the projects that we were considering was the sports complex, um, phase two and or phase three. You have now funded, uh, feasibility study for phase two and phase three, if we were to hold off on this. Allow Jennifer and Public Works to complete that report, we would have a more accurate depiction on what council wants there with a more accurate. A cost estimate that at some future date, we could then say, here, you know, public, if you wanna pay four million dollars for this. You know, it will cost X amount, so it really is the economic side as well as the pragmatic side of us having additional information. Um, in addition to that, the L T G O bond of two million dollars, um, that would be, as Dave mentioned, a hundred sixty one thousand dollars. Annually, if council were to do that, that again is council managed bond that you can do without going to the voters. Um, similar to what was done for the conservation properties that we have recently acquired along. Harborview Drive or? But you know the. So, um, and we wanted to bring this in there because we know that we have an agreement with the Y M C A. For phase one A of Sports Complex, as you've heard from the Y M C A and others, they're struggling to meet. The, um, six or seven million dollar price tag of phase one A. At the same time, we've heard from our residents that they really desire phase one A to go forward. We know that our project is gonna be breaking ground, going out to bid later this year, the Y M C A desires to be on a similar path. Um, I won't speak for them, but in our meetings that we've had with Tom Taylor, Jesse Palmer. And Charlie, um, Davis, they have indicated that if the city were able to provide. Some funds to phase one A, then they feel that they could meet the remainder of their, uh. Their fundraising goal and be under construction likely next spring. So we have provided the two million dollar L T G O bond number here for council's consideration. Uh, I will note that in our professional opinion, it does benefit us to strongly consider this and helping out the Y. Noting that it is city property that they are constructing improvements on, and the improvements that they construct will ultimately be property of the city. So it would not be us giving money to someone else, it would be us giving money to us that someone else is going to build those improvements for us. If the Y M C A are not able to reach their funding goal. And if our agreement were to sunset. What that would mean for the city is that we would then be on the hook for phase one A improvements at seven million or more, uh, and. Um, we would then need to take on the operations and maintenance of the fields that currently the Y M C A is saying that they will operate and maintain. And replace the turf, et cetera, so, um. We will go short of a recommendation of that, but the, the, again, the two million dollar L T G O bond going towards phase one A. Would be a hundred sixty one thousand dollars a year that we would pay, we have H E Z coming in that we could replenish ourselves for. So we have a funding source that is not general fund, so it would not impact staff, we would not be taking that from general fund. Um, to pay back this hundred sixty one thousand a year, uh, and we would ensure that phase one A is constructed.
Councilor Martin, did you have your hand up?
One of your general questions, so. He was specific on the hundred sixty one, one forty four debt service. Along with, is that just paying back the two, it's like taking a loan from ourselves, is there interest on that, or are we paying?
Well, that would be an actual bond that we would sell to the public, and it would be a twenty year, and, and we would pay the physical agent, U S Bank.
Be twenty times hundred sixty one, is what the total cost to the city would be.
Yes.
So three something.
Yeah, and that would be P and I to the principal interest.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Well, considering the pros plan and considering the flash vote. Our community is not really interested in phase one A. Uh, if you look at those two things, they didn't come up high on the list of either the pros plan or either the flash vote. So maybe it's time that we just, uh. Take a step back.
I don't know, Josh, can you remind me if we asked about phase one A?
Phase one A was not in the flash vote, so it was not a question of support on that.
Well, it wasn't all phase one A, but it was certainly the two pieces of.
That were in the flash vote.
Yeah, phases two and three. Phase, phase one is already considered in progress, so we didn't ask about that.
And I would also point out that in the post plan, it was also considered. Sports complex was considered a capital project, so we did not ask if people wanted it in the pros plan, so that's. That's not something that we should consider, sometimes it's.
Thank you, Councilor Henderson.
Yes, thanks, can you guys hear me okay? Just wanna make sure before I start talking, okay, so Katrina, thank you for, um, you know, recapping that so well, and I think there is a. I mean, there's, we have a lot of options in this, and so, yes, while there's a, a parks bond that we could put out. I do like the idea of borrowing money from ourselves, getting this project up and running, and, you know, really looking at only. Really only two million dollars on this phase one A that the Y M C A is seeing that they need support on, uh, to get this going. I think is, is great and very reasonable, of course, yes, we are putting the land out there, but as Katrina mentioned. The investment that they're putting into it, the commitment of maintaining it, um, and really getting the ball rolling on something that the community has been asking for a long time. I think that there is, if there's any, I hear about it a lot, but if anybody else doesn't feel like it's a topic of big concern anymore. I think it's because they've been waiting so long and thought this was in the works and gonna be started already, so. Uh, so that's just a good reminder for all of us to keep up on our, our calendar of, of all these different projects and update people, um, but there's definitely a need. And of course, we have the phase two and three feasibility this year, um, phase two, as you can tell, um, you know, most of the, the wor- the groundwork is done there. So when we look at just installing all the Fisher turf on those fields, it's a pretty simple project. Um, and, you know, that's another commitment that we've made, phase three, you know, we'll get there, I think, in time, obviously, that has a much higher dollar amount. But seeing this project through to completion, I know through my own poll, which doesn't probably count for much to everybody else, that this is very important. So I would like the council to, you know. I hope to get support in the area of, of doing this, I'm gonna butcher the word, but, uh. The, the, Katrina, help me out, what was the, the, uh, council on it, something? Council manic, thanks, I need to, like, write that down in phonics for myself, um. But I think that is a, a great opportunity, really low cost, and we look at, you know, especially if we look at pushing this project out any further, it's only gonna cost more. So getting the ball rolling would be good. Thanks.
Thank you, yes, you can.
So I'm just showing the flash vote, um, responses here, um, fifty four point five percent of our residents did not know that there's an existing. Bond that is set to expire, so that was interesting, um. And Josh, feel free to jump in at any point, but you can see here, we asked about converting the Penn Light Fields, so that's phase two. Um, this one is field south of the Y M C A, so this is phase three.
Phase three, oh, sorry, thank you.
So, uh, just since we're talking about it, thirty seven percent said skate park. Um, next to the, uh, us here, senior center scored very high, similar to converting, um, phase two.
Question about that.
Hold on, we got a lot of people ahead of you, but I'll, I'll add you into the.
And as we had talked about at our last one, there is a high desire for the Cushman Trail Connector. So that, those were the main ones that jumped out, but we, yeah, we did not ask about phase one A.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Liggins.
Yes, thank you, um, I really appreciate all the work you've done on this. I really appreciate seeing the numbers and how it will affect people and your. Willingness to be candid about the numbers coming forward and how you're feeling about. The, you know, economic times that were, as you're starting to see trends. Um, I would love to see what you propose, Katrina, and get, you know, potentially this bond. Give the money to the Y, go forward and complete phase one, because we don't have the data yet, and it's not gonna be available for a while. For phase two and phase three, and then once we have a really good grasp on what it's gonna cost to do phase two and three. And what's happening within the economy, and we can kind of monitor that, then we could, if we wanted to take that to the voters next year. You know, there's, it's, you know, let's move forward and complete some projects, it would be so exciting just to see even phase one. You know, to be brought through to completion and to show that partnership with the Y. And two million dollars to get what would cost, like you said, seven million dollars if we were not. Potentially or more.
Um, with operations and maintenance.
Right, right, and you know, and then maybe we can consider, you know, as far as the trail part, the Cushman Trail down. That's one of the least, you know, lesser expensive items, maybe some power.
Those are, those are really good points, and I think we knew that the Cushman Trail Connector was going to be very high, as I mentioned to you. The first day on the Parks Manager job when I started here, it was, we gotta get Cushman down to the, um, the Thai hut, yeah. But, yeah, get us there, so that didn't surprise us that that was that high, but we're also showing a strong desire for a senior center. And I know that you've all been talking about that and with various groups coming forward, so the data is good, right? So we know kind of the temperature of what the folks are, are desiring, which would be. Again, important, that, you know, renovating the fields, the trail and the senior center.
Councilor Reverend.
Yes, um, I am agreeing with what Brenda said and also what stuff that, or I guess council members should set and mark. I think it's really important to do the fields right now, to show that we are. Providing those fields and that we're listening to the people who have been climbing for those fields for so long. It is something that whenever I'm talking to people in the community who have young children, that's what they wanna know, is when are we gonna get the field, when is that gonna happen? And I think that this showed. And I think that this showed a commitment on the be- on behalf of the city that we are committed to building the fields. It also shows the why that we're committed to working with them and helping them with their fundraising problems. Um. Cushman Trail, I'm also really in favor of Roger and I from the post plant. We know how big that was there too, and so I would like to see that happen. But I don't think that we should put a bond before the voters right now. The fire department has one coming up, and I just think we're gonna get into fatigue along with what's. Potentially happening in the economy. So I would recommend that we wait a year. On putting a bond forward and see where we are. Yeah. Not the two million dollars. No, I wanna do the councilmatic, not the bigger one.
Okay. Thank you. Uh Councilmember Henderson.
Yeah, the question about the senior center, it says it's Soundview Forest Park. Was that a new building or was that the converted in Austin? I think it was confusing. Some people thought we're gonna.
I had seven phone calls about that.
What's about that?
So um yes, you know, we live and we learn where we want to go out and hear from our residents, and so we're. Again, flash vote's new to us, so we will work on that in the future, but that again was uh either renovation of the existing Soundview House. Or tear down and rebuild, and what I learned from that is that there's education that we can do about what we own. Because the residents that I talked to had no idea that the city also owned that house.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right.
I didn't.
So, yeah, it's, you know, Jennifer and Scott are working on updating our parks websites with photos and accurate information, and so we'll. Look at ways to. To get that out.
Thank you.
But I was not tearing boundaries.
No. Councilor Reverend.
Couple things. Uh. I'm not in favor of coming out with bond right now. I am in favor of the councilmatic. Uh. I have a question that we have two million dollars we're gonna give the Y. And they're only at about one point six right now, and they're fundraising.
They're over two.
They're over two.
Okay, so that's four over four.
And if they.
And it's gonna cost seven. Do they have some people that stop and come in until they get?
Yes.
Four.
They have a, they have a large donor that will come in once they reach a certain amount, which this would help them get that amount, and then several other. Um. Other.
Okay, so they're pretty confident that they'll quickly raise the rest of the funds, even though they've got. Uh. But yeah.
Yes, and and to your point on this, I guess I I should have mentioned this, with this, it isn't, again, it's not gifting to the Y. It's going on our property that we will own, but also there will be parameters surrounding money, so. If the Y were to pull out, we will need to amend the agreement with the Y, this is a more concise way to say that, to ensure that that two million dollar investment is protected. Should any, everything fall through.
And the person that wanted the naming rights, what happened to their money? Are they still in or out?
Um from our understanding, they are out right now.
Okay.
We can chat offline about that. Um let's see, Councilmember Martin, I think you were next.
So it, would it work, would the process work for the Y where we would give them a letter of intent? That we would pass the councilmatic bond. So that they can then go to their donors and say, we've got it from the city that there's a letter of intent that gets sold out for this additional funding of two million dollars. Or is it possible that we need to go out and do the bond? And then hope that the Y gets it. I'm I'm just trying to.
That's a great question. We wanted to come to you and see if there was an appetite for it before we go back and talk with the Y. We have a meeting with them next week to see what would be required, and that would help us plan for how quickly we would either need to get it on the agenda to pass or. Um with or with a letter of intent, but it would take uh an amendment to our agreement, so likely would take a bit of time.
Okay, and then once we get to that and we're we're sharing more with the residents. Is it something that we can put together, the Y can put together and say, here's our annual investment in city property to take care of these fields? So people can see the trade offs and the benefit, cost benefit, that we were talking about that we would be getting. As residents. And then lastly, and we could maybe table this date, just curious on bonds in general, if we were going with the. UTGO, I think is what the acronym was. Um so people on fixed income often get um. Support to not have to pay as high a percentage of taxes. But that obligation doesn't go away. Those of us who can pay, you could turn that up by understanding correctly. Meeting that obligation, right? Because the the county's still saying that whatever X dollar didn't have to pay. So that's one question. So the rate could be a little higher. Can the rate go up? If we said it was sixteen cents per thousand. Factored in the fact that we don't have individuals capable of paying, we have more and more pressure on people with fixed income. Would the rate ever go up?
I don't think so, because the 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 number of non-participants, if you will, it it doesn't move the needle.
Okay.
It is what it is. Uh and the way it works now is we get two assessed values for the city. One for the um, excuse me, one is let's say four billion. The other is a little less, and the li- the little less one is for excess levies. But if we were to do the two million, it wouldn't, none of this would apply, because it would be paid for by the general bond. So it would have no impact on the taxpayer.
Right, that I understand. And then the second thing is, is if we did go out for a bond, you know, this is a year or so down the road, is commercial property also, so?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Another bit of good news that I heard actually today from Councilmember Denson in uh at the chamber forum. So when we did our senior property taxes exemption seminar, the current number is like fifty, just under fifty thousand dollars a year. Um income for seniors to qualify for these different property tax exemptions. They are looking at raising that to over sixty thousand by next year, so that would be, it would be, and. Not only would just that one alone be raised to a higher threshold, but there are also a lot more things that they are looking at. Allowing seniors to exempt from, to make that number go down even lower for them. And so all of this is gonna be in the works. Kind of hopefully will be perfect timing. By the time we would be ready for this. All of those other laws would be in place and those other exemptions will be in place, so it would be probably even less for them at that point.
I also have other good news that I just remembered. Um Councilmember Densing, or yes, County Councilmember Denson called. And I was reminded that Derek Young, on one of his last days, uh earmarked a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for us. To go toward the construction of Phase One A. And so we would actually only need one point eight seven million. It would not, it's.
No, put that.
Oh, yeah.
But then the other part could go.
Councilor Book.
Yes, so um if we are going to put in two million dollars in addition to the. Money that we put in to buy the land. Then as we work on a new um MOU, I guess with the Y, I think maybe our citizens deserve a little bit more use. Uh than what they were going to get with the Y paying for all of this. And I think we need to have the naming rights back to the city. Because the city is putting in two million and and we bought that property for six million, right? And we're putting in also money for grading and for infrastructure up there. I think our citizens deserve more time on the fields, and I think the city deserves the naming rights.
Thank you. Um. For the naming rights, again, we communicated that it was not able to name the entire thing, just Phase One A. So would you be suggesting that if someone came in, let's say with a one point five million dollar donation for Phase One A, that they could not name a field?
Yes, because we're putting in two million dollars for our citizens' money, and we're also bought the property, and we're also doing grading and other infrastructure. So they'd have to come in, as far as I'm concerned, I think they should come in with more than one point million. They should come in more than what the citizens are putting in. If they wanna have naming rights. I mean, I can, I can, I mean, this is what our citizens are doing. If somebody's coming in with a million and a half, and they're getting. Family naming rights or whatever naming rights they want, when our citizens are putting in the funding for this. Something doesn't sound right to me about that. I think we need to work on something a little better. Maybe if somebody wants the naming rights, maybe they need to come in with three million.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. I I agree with Jenny on that. That wasn't gonna be my comment, but. I like that the city and the residents are putting in that much money to give away the naming rights to somebody, less than that may not be a good idea. Question I had was, assuming that we go out with this councilmatic bond for two, two million. And economy tanks. For the next six months, and the donors say we just don't wanna put any more money in it, what happens to that money with this thing?
So that's, again, we wanted to come and take the temperature of the council. We'll need to go back and figure out what the agreement says, and but. There will be adequate provisions to safeguard the money.
Okay, could it be used for something else, or will we just?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilor McInnes.
Yes, thank you. Um you know, I I appreciate what you all said about the naming rights, but I'm gonna um give a different approach. I think that. When you are the Y and you have to do a philanthropic fundraising drive, that. That when you give naming rights, that helps bring in donors. Um and I would hate to take their ability to fundraise. And meet those matching funds away from them by saying you can't have naming rights if there. Is, you know, money that would come to meet that, however much they need to raise. Because remembering what Katrina said, that if this were to fall through, it comes back to the city. And would cost us. I just don't know if that's something I would say, I'm gonna stand on this. I appreciate what you're saying. You know, this, you know, that our community has paid tax dollars and, you know, put money towards it. But their director of philanthropy or whoever's doing that, that's, that's a tool they can use. And I don't necessarily wanna take that away from them. I'm curious how others feel, but um this is a different perspective, so, and I appreciate their opinion.
Councilmember.
I agree with Councilmember Liken. I think that would hamper the Y's funding efforts. Uh naming, I mean, it's. It's something that's very common, but the whole place is gonna be called the G or Harvard Sports Complex. So there's where our citizens get to know that it's they they pay their taxes, have a G Harvard Sports Complex. This field happens to be the Arneesh, this one happens to be the Rodenberg.
Peninsula Light Field will remain, Peninsula Light Field at the G Harbor Sports Complex, and it would be the same with any of the other.
Yeah, so I I don't think we should hamper the Y's fundraising effort. Uh I do think maybe possibly, I mean, the the city's probably. Better than most, but I think to negotiate the next MOU, maybe we don't hand them. The two million dollars, they, we, a le- letter of intent that would allow them to get their additional funding. And we also have the. The letter of intent would say, you don't get this unless you get the dish funding. Or, you know, I mean. We, and and I do think that no matter what we do, the public should be made aware. That even, you know, it's been our, not our excuse, but we've had to defend ourselves for Y's and being built. And our defense is, Y hasn't raised the money, but we're very hesitant to say or blame the Y for not raising money. I think that when we give them two million dollars or give ours, whatever it is, we're coming up with two million bucks. Public ought to be made aware that that is coming from the city, and it wasn't planned. So, yeah, we're stepping up.
I.
We shouldn't give something without getting some.
I think it's definitely something that we will want to communicate about, this, which has been kind of a lack of communication and people are like, why is this happening? I think it's important for the residents to know the hard work that you all are putting in to ensuring that this is gonna get over the finish line, it sounds like.
Councilor Reverend.
Yeah, I would just, um I just wanna reiterate from a professional standpoint, as a fundraiser who has raised money. For fields similar to this before. It, and just general fundraising. Changing whether or not somebody has the ability to name something in the middle of the fundraising is just not. Good practice. And I think that it would damage our relationship with the Y to do that. Um. One of the projects I worked on in Anchorage had a similar issue with funding. It wasn't COVID. It wasn't that big of an international incident. But we had a funding issue, and the municipality came to our, came to our rescue. They supported the project because the residents of the municipality believed in it, and I think that that's. That we have a similar situation going on here, where our residents, our community believes in this project, and we're showing. That we also believe in. And we should not change naming rights. We shouldn't hamper the Y further.
Thank you. Councilmember Starset.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I was gonna start off by disagreeing with Brenda's comments, but I'll agree with hers. Um Lee's and Mary's, um all well said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so in keeping track with the conversation so far, I have majority consensus to support with the councilmatic bond. I have two for sure knows on not going out for the parks bond right now. And then in terms of what Councilmember Book suggested, in terms of the city having more use, and I I don't. Have clear consensus on maybe what we can talk about with the Y as far as that portion, but there's definitely majority consensus to not remove the naming rights. Uh portion from their lease. Um so that's kind of what I have right, right now in my notes. I don't know if that matches up with your notes, but um. So I guess I would ask for a show of hands on of those that would like to wait on the bond. Okay, so majority, Councilmember Starset, are you? Yeah, okay, so everybody wants to leave. No, we'll see the bond right now. Okay, so got, got that loud and clear, and then I have um. Councilmember Starset, Rodenberg, Lichten, and Barber saying yes to the councilmatic bond. Who else is in favor of the councilmatic? And we're not voting officially, this is just consensus. Henderson and Martin. And I have, okay, so six out of seven on yes to the councilmatic bond, so. I think that's the direction we've been looking for, um Councilmember.
Can I get a clarification on the naming rights thing? Cause we've heard different things, well, it's just gonna be the field, but earlier, I believe, we heard. The person wanted my naming rights for the entire complex. Or is that, has that changed?
No, nothing has to be changed. There was nothing in the original lease that said that they could name the whole sports complex. It's very specific to Phase One A. Which is two fields. What unfortunately, there was some miscommunicated marketing materials that we were not aware of until recently. That were given out to potential donors, and it led them to believe they could name the whole sports complex. We have since corrected that information, but in essence, it was a little bit too late for this one person, because they. Had been given this information from the beginning that was not correct, and so. That's been corrected now, but it just created confusion in the beginning, so now going forward. They know, people that are participating or want to, know that it's just for the fields only and not for the entire complex.
And I can't recall what the agreement says about city open use, but we'll be sure to look at that and bring it back to the council as we're. Going through, because there will need to be adjustments made, since it sounds like we'll be. Doing a letter of intent or something very similar to that for two million.
Councilor.
Is is there a possibility that those who reside within the city of Harvard, their way to use that field to be at a lesser cost? Than those who would be outside?
I believe that is in the agreement, but again, I need, I need to, I need to re-familiarize myself with what it says.
Councilor.
So, so if there's going to be naming rights, I'm wondering if if council has any desire to have a minimum amount. For the naming rights. There was no amount before, I don't think, for the naming rights.
For One A or for the whole thing?
No, for One A.
One A.
For One A. Is there a, is there any desire to have a, say, two million dollars and you get naming rights?
Is somebody unfamiliar and half now that they'd say they want naming rights?
I don't wanna speak for the Y, but there's a number of people who are waiting to see what you guys are wanting to do.
And it doesn't the Y have a development plan that has different levels that fifty dollars you get a bathroom? You know, a hundred dollars, I I thought that.
It's a lot higher.
Yeah. They have changed their marketing materials to reflect what, what is now current, what is the original intent of the lease. And they do have some minimums in there. We can always get that to council and see if you guys agree or would like to ask the Y to change those. Um, that can be in our conversation that.
The agreement will be reopened and.
All of this will be back on the table.
And, and all their. I, I mean, in, in the past, the agreement didn't have any costs in there for there.
No, it does not.
So, so are we gonna, is it, I mean, how can we put costs in there then or say that we like it or we don't like it? When we didn't have that say before?
We need to talk to Daniel before we can give you an answer.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you, council, for your direction on this, um, bond and. We'll just continue to work toward. Getting numbers for maybe next year.
Does the Y know anything about, was thinking about this? Yeah.
They have seen the packet. And asked a question about what else do you?
To start.
Yes.
So I'm sure conversations are forthcoming after the study session. Okay, um, thank you, thank you, Dave, so much. So moving on to our last agenda item and we have twenty minutes before we need to start heading upstairs. Um, this is the short term rentals update and our community development director, Carl Seamus, is here to give us this report.
Thanks for your. We saved the best for last, of course. There, uh, so, uh, in your, in your packet today, I just provided a memo, um, this is a real, a basic overview of kind of where we're at today and really it's just a month later. Um, from when I reported out to you last time and not much has changed. Um, what I had hoped and I noted in the memo that I would have, uh, the Granicus, um, data for you, we did, uh, get a, an overview of that data this morning. Which was, um, enlightening actually, and I'll share a little bit of that with you, not on the screen, but just verbally. We will be, um, taking from that data and creating, uh, creating a, a full report. To you that has pie charts, far better and more sophisticated mapping than what I've provided to you here. Um, and, uh, and actually gets into the dollars and cents a little bit too. So there's some really, really good data. We've kind of got it. There's so much there, uh, that we're gonna have to drill down into a little bit and figure out what's useful because there's so much that it could be almost too building, so. And I think, I, and I know councilman Wook is going to ask me about the public facing portion of that, um, of that data and what that looks like in there, so. I thought there might be some sort of public facing, uh, dashboard, uh, that would be interactive for, for publicly put on the website they get coming, but there isn't that. It's, it's all fairly, um. It's robust and it's fairly technical and so we're gonna have to sort of create that, I think, is what it looks like. So we're, we're gonna work to pull what we think is interesting. We'll bring that back to council study session and find out if you also feel it's interesting or we're missing things and then we can go back into the data and figure out what we can pull out of there. To, um, you know, to make it holistic. Uh, and then we can create our own, essentially create our own dashboard out of it and that, and especially since we're gonna be updating the website, I think it'll be even better. Right now, it'll still be a little bit funky with the, um, civic plus version we're using right now, so, so we're just gonna have to make do, but, uh, but the data is great. Uh, I'll dive into that in just a minute, just a little bit of what I know. Uh, just wanted to hit these high points really quick here though and let you know, so that, so twenty S S T R applications so far. Uh, that's only three more since last time we talked about this.
In, in the packet, it said those statistics were April thirteenth.
Uh, that was since, so since our last update on April thirteenth, although when I met with you last, it was April thirteenth, so these are the statistics sent out to them, so in a month, here's what's happened or three years has changed. Uh, we've issued sixteen, actually that's changed in just the last few days, we've issued seventeen now. So we have actually just two, uh, two of these, uh, applications under review currently. Of those, of the three new ones that we received over the month, we didn't get any, um, comments from, from residents or anything on the notice of application, so there's nothing new there. Still the same number of comments that we had received previously. No new complaints, um, and no new, and so obviously then no new violations. Uh, of all of them, so seven of the short terminal operations are new and I put that in quotes because, um, that means that they're weren't on, they weren't on the list that, uh. Jeremy had, when he had done his analysis back in. October, I think of last year, uh, only seven of these applications weren't on that list, so that's why I called it. Technically necessarily new operations, but they're new due to us because we didn't find it with the, the data that. Um, still two out, just two applicants from outside of the city, uh, however. Two of those, uh, of, of those, both of them have a gig harbor zip codes. One applicant that we know of from outside the state still, that was the same as last year, or I mean, last month. Um, so we, I added this in, uh, fifteen owner occupied, uh, rentals, twelve, um, whole house rentals and seven partial rentals. Uh, when I say owner occupied, I mean that the person, uh, who is running the short term rental is also living in the house at some portion of the year. So we're not specifying whether it's a majority of the year or, or not and, and or they're living in the house and renting out a couple rooms or they're living in the house and renting out an ADU. Uh, again, with the Granicus data, we'll be able to dive down a little bit, get, get some better data for you. Um, but overall, not, not a lot has changed, so.
So two out of the city, but they're. These are our zip codes.
Correct.
So they're. Adjacent to the city line or something.
They're in the, they're, they're within our zip code, yeah, so they're, yeah, they have a, a gig for headrests.
So there are five that show P O boxes and I think they're counted as being in the city. If you, if you, uh. If you look at who the people are and Google their names and you'll find out that four of them leave that site that's a little in it.
Uh, councilmember Henderson?
So based on this, doesn't seem like we really need to alter anything yet? Maintain current speed and heading?
It seems to be going just fine. We haven't been receiving, uh, any complaints about the process, uh, most of the, most of the applicants have been happy with the process. We haven't been receiving complaints from the communities at large. So, yeah, I would say so far the, we can, we can stay the course.
Although it's strong caveat that you are the policymakers and the ones that set regulations and so if you feel that. That this is too many, then, you know, the, the opportunity to. Direct staff is, I think, one Carlos as he's presenting this.
Uh, and, and so just really quickly, just, uh, briefly what we learned a little bit about today. Uh, so the, the high point is that there were forty-six unique. Um, short term rentals that were identified, uh, in the data that Granicus came up with. Those do include the little boards, however, so that's something that we have to filter out and they do have, uh, in their tables, they have it by. Type, so it was an apartment or ADU or a home or a boat, so we can filter that stuff out. About four, so about fourteen of those forty-six are actually little boards. Uh, we also think that, um, of those forty-six, there's likely six more that are, that would be, uh, included at the Parsonage and the Maritime Inn, which are considered, uh. Bed and breakfast, but they do advertise on Airbnb and BRVO and places like that. The interesting thing about the data that Granicus grabs is that sometimes long-term rentals will advertise on BRVO and Airbnb, places like that. Right now, we don't have any of those, but sometimes that happens. So in the data, they show that, you know, this could be short term rental or long term. Right now, the data shows that we don't have any of those listings out there. Um, they show, uh, eighty-eight. Listings. Out in the, in the, uh, on, online listings of those, so for the forty-six, so they have them listed in multiple places, but we can get that data too, which is pretty interesting. Overall, going back as far as their data goes and as far back as they can see, there have been about a hundred and fifty-five. Uh, STRs that have been unique STRs, so units that have been advertised as STRs going back and we don't know what that initial date is. Um, because some have been listed longer, you have to kind of look into each one uniquely to figure out, uh, you know, how long it's been listed, so that could be. You know, one we were looking at is back to as far as two thousand nineteen, so. Um, and the other thing to consider there likely is that some, a lot of those are gonna be boats, so I imagine that, um, people are listing boats. List them and then don't list them and then maybe list them again later, so we have to figure out exactly what that means, but. Um, but that's a large number, but at the moment, forty-six and no new listings within the last month, so that's the other thing that we can find in this data, which is kind of interesting.
Um, councilor Storset had a scan then?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Carl, great update on this. Um, you know, my just initial thoughts are, you know. People wanna do the right thing, right? And this was a, a pretty unregulated thing in the past and not a lot of attention around it until it rose up. Um, but I think it's, people are responding really well. This is a great amount of applicants, people are trying to, they're making an effort to make it work. I think if we have any outliers there, some people maybe that are taking a little bit more time to see how this went, um, they're gonna. They're gonna catch on, right? They're gonna see what others are doing and doing the permit process, going through the application. Um, so I'm, I'm happy with the results and I know the data has got to be a heck of a crunch, right? Yeah, when you look at. Someone who may be listed in the past, they did it for a short time, maybe they're in a financial need, an extended vacation elsewhere. Um, and maybe they're not continuing to operate, but they've had it listed, so. Um, I really like these updates. I think this is, uh, you know, something exactly what we asked for, um, when we, when we set this policy and. It's good, so I'm, I'm happy with it myself. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Wook.
Thank you. So those folks who are listed and not permitted, what are we doing about them?
So we'll have to reach out to those folks, uh, so right now, uh, we just got this today. They don't have our permit data yet, so that's not in their system, so we're uploading that. Uh, permit data to them today and so then they'll weigh that, that'll, that'll show up in our, uh, in the data that we can access. Um, they're supposed, they're sending us links and everything today, uh, so there's some basically paperwork that we have to do to get into the system. But they're gonna upload those, so we have, you know, we have twenty. Um, and if you take out the, uh, the twenty that we think are little boards and potentially these other, uh, B and Bs, then we're right at about twenty-six that they're showing. Um, out there, uh, within our, within our boundary. Um, and that's right where you can exactly where Jeremy, that, um, we did this analysis last year, so I think we're. Pretty close, uh, on to what we thought we had in the city.
So, so is Adam taking care of those people who are not getting, who are illegal?
We'll reach out to them. And give them an opportunity to come in, just like we would any other code violation, they can come in, their corrective action is to come in and get a permit under review, and if they do that, then it won't be a problem.
Great, great, great.
Could you just follow up on that? Could you just spread the process that you guys will go through before you reach out to them or? Is there any verification or anything like that before you do?
Uh, well, that's a good question. We haven't done this before, so, um, I, you know, we, if we have, uh, if we have it verified through Granicus and Granicus has. It's, it's pretty impressive how they verify things and they actually, it's not just, um, it's not just computer algorithms, they actually have people who are touching each one of these things. And doing the analysis online and much like what Jeremy did, they're actually, they don't get the data from BRVO or Airbnb or any of these companies, they actually have to go and do it on the ground, so. They have a couple that are in the system that they are un, that are unverified, they can't find an address for and that's because they may have. The picture that they might be providing is just of a cell phone on a table or something. So there's nothing for them to be able to verify, you know, whereas otherwise if it's got, you know, it's obvious, it's like. You have a beautiful picture of a kitchen and you can verify that across several platforms, then you know you've got the right place and they have that analysis in their data. So, so like to your point, councilmember Barber, I think will know. Or have a pretty reasonable belief that that person was running an estimate or two people, okay, sending them a letter and letting them know, hey. There might be a problem here, you need to, you need to come in and check.
Great, thank you, it's great. Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks, Tom. So this is the, this update is from last April then. Do you think on the next one we could have a running total than what's new? So we can see that. Sixty-five STR permits have been. Put out and then this month, maybe May, there would be ten more?
There are only three new ones since the last update.
Yeah, I know, I, and yes, the answer is yes, like we can make, we can make it, we can make it more intuitive than what I've provided here.
Then, uh, just, we got an email today from Airbnb Gig Harbor and they're now putting the, um. Giving owners of the STRs places with their permanent number, which is another way to verify just they've actually registered with the city, got a permit.
That's great, yeah. Airbnb is getting sued in a lot of big cities, so they're making a lot of changes to their platform, so that's, that's all positive.
I know, that's great. Councilmember?
So that was going to be my comment about that email. Did we ask them to do that?
We did not.
Okay, maybe it's a good idea to. Just go to the booking agents and tell them we need to see if it's a gig harbor, they need to put the permit number on the, on their advertisement.
We, we didn't, we didn't include that in our, um. Uh, in the code, uh, we could certainly add it to policy probably if council wanted us to do something like that, that a lot of the larger jurisdictions do require even. BRVO or Airbnb to actually have a platform license, they have their own license to, and I brought this up to Daniel at one point and whether or not those, you know. Maybe think about these, the gig economy out there, Uber, you know, any of those, are they required to have a business license to operate within the, within the cities, the company themselves? That I think the answer is not no, exactly. So some larger cities like Seattle, they'll require those large big platforms to actually have a, have a registration or a license.
It's just another touch point that.
It's another, it's another touch point, but it is also something to manage as well. If they need a business license. Uh, well, I didn't pursue it much further than that one conversation, just because I have. All these other things I was dealing with.
Well, I think you could just ask Daniel, you know, yes or no.
Okay.
Do they need that or not? Because with the business license, we have a lot more, uh, regulatory authority.
Through the business license, it's true, yeah.
Time check, we have about four minutes, councilmember Lykens?
I said I was still.
Oh.
I didn't know if it's a, that's signed across the board or not, but on my street, there were three, uh, two years ago, there were three. Uh, Airbnbs and now there are none. Uh, the house is sold, one back there. And now they have permanent residence, so that's a little bit of what you alluded to there, they, they had put some of those.
And there was a spike, there was a spike during COVID too, of people listing, listing homes, right? So that was, it was a big, big deal to start listing homes during COVID because people were staying in those places rather than staying in hotels. So, uh, that's, that's starting to level back out again and get, get.
Correct. So just take a second, I'm just saying thank you, this is super helpful and I'm glad that the consultant. Way that is proving to be useful, because I was the one that suggested the beginning of it, so I'm glad that it's, it's like it's gonna be.
Yeah, well worth it.
Terrific.
Well done.
Thank you, thank you.
The data geeks in your department must be thrilled. Okay, thank you so much, Carl. Um, we will now go into executive session for ten minutes or unless we need to be more. Fifteen minutes. To discuss potential litigation per RCW four-two dot three zero dot one one zero. One I action may be taken following the executive session. Uh, we are going to head up to the executive, uh, conference room upstairs. You can bring your things or leave them here, um, to be, will be here, so, um, you can leave your things if you want. Katrina, Carl and Daniel are staff members invited to the executive session. And after the executive, executive session, council will immediately return to the community rooms and resume regular session. So we will now adjourn to the executive.
The executive session is extended an additional five minutes until five twenty PM.
Welcome back to the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, May twenty-fifth. The time is five twenty-one PM. We have returned from executive session. And if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone, thank you. He did, he said, he said aye.
Aye, goodbye, alright.